Evening. This is the June 19 meeting of the Womackard zoning board of appeals. Before the meeting starts, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's decisions will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, June 23, 2017. The effective date of your variance will be Friday, June 23, 2017, the date which a certified copy is recorded on the land records. The statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, July 9, 2017. If you commence operations and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. First hearing tonight is 1716 Cortuccio, 14 North Branford Road.
Applicant seeks special exception for 2,068 square feet of garage area to construct a 1,500-square-foot detached garage in addition to existing 768-square-foot attached garage. There's also an attachment here from my health department indicating an septic approval be required.
Good evening. Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Dan Cortuccio, 14 North Branford Road, Womackard, Connecticut.
Okay. Would you explain your application to the commission?
I'm looking to add a new detached garage. I have six drivers in my house. I have six vehicles. We have 12 acres. So we have a lot of farm equipment to cut the grass, plows. I'm just trying to get it all under one roof. That's really the main reason. The size is just designed to be proportionate to the size of the house and the front acreage of the lot.
Is the detached garage building that's shown on this drawing, it abuts the seller property?
It would what, sir?
It abuts the seller property.
It does. I think it's a field, a cornfield.
And why do you need such a large garage?
I'm just looking to be able to be able to park the six vehicles inside instead of leaving them in the driveway. Right now, I have two-car garage, plus it's about a half of size more. Like I said, we have a large tractor to cut the grass, snow blowers, plows. I'd just like to get that all under the roof instead of leaving it outside. So if I could put three cars at the house and three cars in this garage, plus the tractors and everything across from it.
It's probably on this application somewhere, but I don't see it right now. What is the size of your lot?
It's 11 acres.
11 acres, okay. Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I got one question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
This garage is going to be specifically used for storage of vehicles. There's not going to be any type of repairs?
Oh, absolutely not.
And are you planning any toilet facilities or anything in this garage?
No, sir. No water.
Okay.
No heat.
Okay. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, and in this picture, the design of the garage, is that what it's going to look like, or is that closer?
That's, uh...
That's it?
That's it. The blueprint that Dan Lyons drew up, just changed a little bit on it. I think he removed the dormers.
Okay. That was my question. You know, you're going to be storage upstairs, or...
It's going to be a cathedral ceiling.
Okay.
So there won't be any storage, no second floor at all.
Looks nice, by the way.
Thank you, sir.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Hein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions for you. How many cars do you have right now? Did you say six?
I have six drivers and six vehicles.
Okay. What are the other... So you have three drivers, did you say?
Six drivers.
Okay. And what are the other three? What types of vehicles are the other three?
Oh, so we have six vehicles, six cars to drive every day.
Yeah.
Those, my kids, my mom, they all feel they need to park inside.
Oh, I gotcha.
And then I have a farm tractor to cut the grass, this plow, a snow blower, push mower. I'd like to be able to keep all that under one roof.
Okay. I wasn't sure what you meant by three drivers. So you have three drivers, six vehicles.
Six drivers, six vehicles.
Six drivers, six vehicles. You have an existing garage. How many cars can you fit in that existing?
Two cars, plus some of the, you know, lawn mower, the snow blower.
Okay. And you want to build this garage that will allow for the garaging of three additional vehicles, right?
Three additional vehicles. That's why I requested the three doors, so it'll match the house. And then the rest of the space, I could put the plow, the snow blowers, the tractor, and still only have three doors to match the house.
Those cars that you cannot fit in your existing garage now, where do you park those?
They park in the driveway.
Okay. Do you know whether any of the other homes in your area have garages, detached garages, that are approximately this size?
The house directly in front of me has a barn that's probably 3,600 square feet in his yard. The house in front of me to the right has a five-car garage that's attached to the house.
Okay. And I'm asking the questions because you're seeking a special exception, and one of the criteria is really how it fits into the existing neighborhood, okay?
Thank you, sir.
So that's why I'm asking those questions.
Thank you.
The... You said there's not going to be any repairs or anything like that that you plan on doing within that garage, correct?
The vehicles... The problem is, is everybody in my house drives new vehicles, so they all feel that they're entitled to the two spots that are available. So it's first come, first served.
But you're not going to be putting any sort of lift or anything like that inside?
Oh, okay.
This garage is going to be used solely for storage?
Correct.
Okay. What is the... How large is your house?
It's roughly 40, 400 square feet. It's one-floor ranch-style. So it's 106 by 40 or 50 wide.
Okay. And I ask that question because one of the reasons for the limits on the garage sizes is that we don't want to have garages built that are almost as big as the home, okay? So that's, you know, the garage that you're thinking is a pretty large, large garage. And then when you add that to your existing garage, we don't want to have garages that are, you know, larger than the house or just as large as the house. And so that's why I asked that question as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any further questions.
Anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor of this application or against the application? Okay, close the public hearing and leave it to the word for any questions you may have of the...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the application, better use of the property without altering the character of the neighborhood.
Second.
Motion to approve. Mr. DeJardins?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rosick?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
And Chairman Bernie?
Yes.
You're all set.
Thank you, sir.
Next hearing is 1717. A variance request from Michael and Son LLC for a front yard setback of 44 feet where 50 feet is required to construct a covered porch at 22 Tennessee Avenue. Good evening. Good evening. You state your name and address for the record, please.
Tim Michael, 6 Lee Street, Bristol, Connecticut.
Okay. And explain your need for your variance.
I'm representing Patricia McCabe. She's an elderly person that's lived in the house over 50 years and has mobility limitations, and she's requesting to add a front-covered porch with a setback variance of 44 feet from the required 50 feet.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening.
I drove out to the site, and I know that the neighbor appears to have a covered porch that comes out farther than the front of the house. Looks like it maybe predated zoning or something, so...
Yes.
You know, I understand the character of the neighborhood.
That's the one to the right you're referring to?
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
But for a variance, we're required to look for some kind of an undue hardship in the land for the porch variance to be granted. Is there any kind of awkwardness with the plot of the land or anything that would sort of justify...
There's awkwardness with the house. There's only two entrances, a front and a side entrance. The side entrance is in the carport. There's also another home directly behind on Algonquin that faces this property that has a similar front porch that was added. That was where the homeowner actually came up with the idea. And obviously, it's a front porch. She has no other way, you know, to put anything in the back or the side.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? Anyone in the audience wish to speak against the application? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and leave it to the commission.
Make a motion that we approve this application for better use of the property and keeping with the character of the neighborhood.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. DeJardins.
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rosick?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
And Chairman Bernie?
Yes. You're all set.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next hearing is 1718 is a special exception request from Severson for 1,400 square foot, 1,400s, and eight square foot total garage area where 936 is permitted at 33 Maltby Lane. Good evening. State your name and address for the record, please.
Eric Severson, 33 Maltby Lane.
Explain the need for your special exception.
I just need more garage space. I own three cars. I have a...
Excuse me. Could you pull the microphone closer to us?
Sorry. Yeah, I have, I own three cars, two of which are in storage, because I don't have the room right now. And I have like a four-wheel drive tractor to do work on my property and do my plowing, lawnmower, girlfriend that wants to park inside the garage, so I just need some more garage space.
The two cars that you have in storage are classic cars, or...
Yeah, yes.
You won't be doing any of your work on these cars in your...
No.
Anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
Good evening. The proposed addition, it's not a second floor or anything. It's just the one-story garage space.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have five cars in total?
I have three cars and like a tractor to do like, like a big tractor, like a farm, small, like a small farm tractor to do work around the house.
And then you have the two other classic cars that you currently have in storage?
Yeah, two of the cars are in storage. I own three cars plus the tractor.
Okay.
And then girlfriend that wants to park inside.
Okay. And how large is your home?
It's just under 1,900 square feet.
Okay. The two classic cars that you have, you have them in storage off-site somewhere?
Well, summertime, I bring them to my house, and like I'll park my truck outside or something. And then my parents have a lot of, like a big barn, so I store them in there in the wintertime.
Okay. And then during the summertime, you bring them, you store them in your existing garage, and you pull your truck out?
Correct.
Okay. And you leave that in the driveway?
Yes.
All right. I guess my concern, and it was my concern with the prior application as well, is that we're dealing with a home of approximately 1,900 square feet and garage area of approximately 1,400 square feet. And so we're dealing with an application seeking garage area of almost as much as your livable floor area of your home. That's my only, that's my concern. That's one of my concerns. The other concern is, now, this is going to be used solely for storage, correct?
That parked cars in, yeah.
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 I guess one of my suggestions is that if this application is approved, that it be approved with the condition that the new garage be used solely for storage. I don't think I have any further questions. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wish to speak against the application? Close the public hearing and open it to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I think the record didn't state that. We have two additional attached letters of condition of approval from neighboring lots, saying that they're in favor of, they have no problems with the addition of this new building, new garage on this property. Make a motion to approve the application, 17... Let's see, what we got there? 17-018. Better use of the property without altering the character of the neighborhood.
I second that. Does either of you wish to add the...
My apologies. Retract and restate it.
Mr. Hein requested that the be added, that the building not to be used strictly for storage of the vehicles.
Mr. Chairman, can I just... I understand what he was, Mr. Heinz was saying, but I think we're kind of putting a stipulation on that, first off, it's going to be hard to enforce, and second off, it's a garage, and you use it, put cars in and tractors. I personally don't see the need for that.
A motion is made and seconded.
Motion to approve, Mr. DeJardins.
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rosick?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
And Chairman Bernie?
Yes. You're all set.
1719, variance for a front setback, full-site compliance at 654 North Colony Road. Anyone here for that?
Applicant is seeking variance for front yard of 31.4 feet where 47.3 feet exist and 50 feet is required to construct in addition to a 320-foot square foot building on the site parcel known as 654 North Colony Road. Expansion of the existing nonconformity on the site necessitates an additional variance application to allow an existing nonconformities on the site to remain where full compliance is required. Parcel is through lot with two front yards and multiple buildings and uses. Applicant is leasing 320-square-foot structure and associated area of the parcel to operate a retail restaurant business. Where this office seeks full-site compliance, we can support the hardship of ancillary parcel site responsibility, which clearly demonstrated compliance with the ancillary partial site requirements, parking and landscaping. Regarding the existing 320-square-foot structure and associated site area, the applicant is seeking to utilize.
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. Donald Plummer, 2168 Chamberlain Highway, Berlin, Connecticut.
Thank you. Would you explain your application to the commission?
I am looking to add a kitchen on the back of a small building to do crab steaming, like in Maryland, the crab shack. You ever, I don't know if you gentlemen's ever been to Maryland, but the steam blue crabs that they sell down there. I grew up in Maryland when I was a kid, and I love to eat them, and you just can't buy them in this state. So I was hoping to add a little steam kitchen off the back of the building so I could, you know, supply those to people. I've been, I'm a roofer now, and I can't be on the roof forever. I can tell you that. So I'm trying to do something a little bit easier. I don't know if you guys like blue crabs, but I just happened to see that building driving by one day in the winter, and I figured it would be perfect.
Amy, would you please explain to the commission the full-site compliance?
As was in the previous application, we had, once you expand the use of, and they will need to go through planning and zoning from here to gain site plan approval and changing the use anyway. But once you expand it by adding that kitchen, now we have to bring the entire site into compliance. This is a problematic site historically. There's numerous uses. There is an abandoned fireplace store also on-site. He's looking to take just that one little building, one little structure. So by partial compliance, I mean he needs to do what he can to run his business, but cannot have the responsibility necessarily to bring the entire site and all its nonconformities. We support the nonconformities remaining, but if there's any violations, we cannot support the issuance of a variance or a full-site plan, so.
Thank you. You understand that?
I do.
Okay. Does any commissioner have any other questions? Yes, Mr. President.
Amy, I just, so the parcel of property, it's not divided at all. It's from the fireplace store all the way over. It's just one parcel?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Interesting. And sir, I'll just ask you the same question that I asked the other folks who applied for variance tonight. When we get an application for variance, we need to have a showing of some kind of an undue hardship having to do with the plot of land or proximity to the streets, that kind of thing. What would you say that the hardship is that would require you to have a variance that would go outside the existing zone?
Well, the size of the building is a little too small for it to do what I want to do. I want to make that like the main building for people to walk in and get their stuff. If I would have to turn that into a place to cook, I'd have to change the whole inside of that building around, and, you know, then I'd have to have, people wouldn't be able to come into that building, you know? I want to be able to make it more convenient for myself and for customers.
And the fact that you have sort of two front yards because you're sandwiched there, that would also make it difficult?
Yeah, I'm seeing it was right in the middle. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Question for staff through you, Mr. Chairman. Amy, staying with what you said before, for the applicant, then, he needs to, when he appears before the planning and zoning with a site plan, he needs to do everything in his power to bring his parcel of land into conformance?
The entire site needs to not be in violation, or he will not succeed with planning and zoning. But in terms of demonstrating his compliance with his portion is what the office would support. How many parking spaces he needs, how much, what the landscaping surrounding his portion. But the entire site needs, the nonconformities can remain, but it cannot be in violation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Hein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have a question for the applicant, but a question more to you, Amy. What happens when another tenant then comes and wants to use another portion of that property? What happens then?
The same thing.
Are we going to somehow subdivide these, this one property and figure out, I mean, how do we, you know, from a practical standpoint, how do we do that?
We can't do that. Everybody is responsible, or the property owner is responsible for the entire lot being in compliance. This applicant is seeking a portion of it is not subdividable. The next portion, if you will, or the next use of the next building will have the same issue to deal with.
Yeah. I mean, I'm all for this, but I'm just looking out into the future. If you have, if we say, okay, you know, he's only using a small portion, and he's going to be in compliance with his small portion, I mean, there's other portions of this property, and I think we may run into issues later on.
I would like to, if, will, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respond and also comment. Number one, there is a comment regarding the submitted plans. There is a picnic area depicted that absolutely this office will not support, that will expand the use beyond. We're speaking of, strictly of that kitchen addition, number one. And number two, I would also recommend that though we are a lessee of a portion of the property, that the site be compliant in regard to violations as a whole prior to approving anything.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wish to speak against the application? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission.
May I ask a question? What are we actually approving here now? If he has to go before the P and Z, we're giving him approval for the exception, or, I mean...
You were approving, or you're making a decision for him to bring this site into full compliance by the expansion of his use. He will need to go to planning and zoning forward despite.
Right. Okay.
The addition adds to the use, which means... The addition adds to the use, which necessitates the full compliance. He could change the use without making the addition and deal with, still have to deal with a site plan approval or a change of use.
Got it.
But that's where, that's what the regulations state, and now he's expanding that use. So now we're making it more non-conforming instead of less. Before they can proceed, they need to have a decision by the zoning board of appeals.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Amy a question?
Absolutely.
Amy, so we're gonna make a motion, I understand this, to come into full compliance, so that's what we're gonna expect him to do. And then we're, part of this variance is also the addition. Now, you were just talking about the picnic tables. Now, since that's expanding the amount of seating or whatever he's, is that something that we're, or is that he gonna, is that gonna be covered under planning and zoning?
I'm asking that you do not include the picnic area, whether you make that a condition or what have you, in any decision you make. When he moves on to the planning and zoning commission, he'll have to limit himself to seating just to maintain the use of a retail restaurant anyway. That's a limited number of seats, so we're trying not to expand the area beyond what already exists for the seating. So the picnic area absolutely will not support beyond the deck. He's got it drawn in there, so. And the applicant understands.
I'm gonna say that because of the conformities that you're, that you want him to come into compliance with and all the rest of this on here, it's very confusing and hard to make a motion for this application.
Mr. Chair, I'll attempt to make a motion. My colleagues can correct me. I would move that we accept the application for variance for the addition of the kitchen with the condition that he come back or go to planning and zoning if he needs the picnic area.
Could, I don't mean, could you reword that so we?
Certainly. I would make-
It's a difficult one, believe me, I understand.
No, I'd make a motion to approve the variance with regard to the expansion of the kitchen to construction of the building with the condition that that does not include the picnic area that's noted on the drawing that's been submitted. You would have to either come back to this body or to planning and zoning for approval for that.
I'll second that. Only, but we also probably want to also add in there about the coming into full compliance with the site.
Happy to add that as a friendly amendment.
We'll make two motions. Motion to approve the first variance. Mr. DeJardins?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rusik?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Bernie?
Yes.
And the other one.
And now I'd make a second motion to, did the applicant make best efforts to come into compliance with his portion of the site? I'll second that.
Motion to approve, Mr. DeJardins.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rusik?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
And Chairman Bernie?
Yes. You have approval.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next hearing is seventeen dash twenty, a variance for a front setback and side setback from DeMao at nineteen Colonial Lane. Application is for a front yard of twenty-five feet where twenty-five feet exist and forty feet is required, and side yard of sixteen feet where twenty-six feet exist and twenty feet is required to build an addition to the dwelling. State your name and address for the record, please.
Paula DeMao, nineteen Colonial Lane, Wallingford.
And you?
My name is Eric Soderlin from Wallingford. I'm gonna be her contractor.
Would you explain the variance, please?
Well, my surveyor had explained to me that it's a legally non-conforming lot that predates zoning, and it's an undersized lot already, did not meet front setback. And I do have pictures of her property and the property next door that this gentleman's here, who has already been approved to build the same size structure that she's applying for.
Are you willing to submit those documents there for viewing?
Yeah.
For the record?
To see them, sure.
Sure. Give them, just give them to Mr. Chairman Bernie.
You want to duplicate this more or less? Okay. You have, let the rest of the commissioners see this. We have one for everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hein.
Thank you. So the photos that you've submitted show an addition that's similar, if not identical, to the neighbor's house. Which neighbor are we talking about? Seventeen Colonial Lane or twenty-one Colonial Lane?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. And I guess the additional question I'll ask is just the same question I asked the other folks asking for variances tonight. What sort of special features of the property would require an exemption from the current zoning construction?
Excuse me?
I apologize. What special hardship requires a variance with regard to this property?
Because we're not meeting the setbacks that have been stated in a zone that is non-conforming.
Okay. Did you and the property owner give any thought to potentially expanding the house straight back as opposed to?
Yes, because the expansion of the living room, where she's looking to be able to have more room for her two children, is on that side of the house.
Okay.
It wouldn't make any sense to, with the kitchen on the backside and the bathroom to, no reason to expand back there, or would there, it'd be practical to do it.
Okay, all right. The source of my concern was mostly the proximity to the neighbor at twenty-one Colonial Lane, not the front setback, because the, it doesn't expand, it doesn't change the depth at which the house sits anyway from the front, so.
No, it doesn't.
Right, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a mention, I drove by the property, it's a nice, very well-maintained property, and I think that addition in the neighborhood would be pretty conformant to all the other additions that are going on in this neighborhood, and I wish you luck. I think it's a nice plan that you have here.
Thank you.
Well, those lots are relatively small, and just about anybody that wants to put an addition would have to get a variance because the lots are so small. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? Yes, sir?
I'm in favor.
Go up to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
Lawrence Sommo, twenty-one Colonial Lane, and we are in favor of this, my wife and I.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application? Does anyone wish to speak against the application? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and open it to the commission for motions, et cetera.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application, better use of the property without altering the character of the neighborhood.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. DeJardins.
Yes.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rusik?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Chairman Bernie?
Yes.
You're all set.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next order of business is to approve last month's minutes. Sommo? All in favor?
Aye.
Next order of business is to consider, the consideration of the memorandum forwarded to us by the town attorney, Janice Small, which, is everyone read that memorandum? Everyone has read it?
Yeah, read, call attention to item number nine. We seem to, we seem to have used it all night long in terms of restraint on trade and better use of the property are not sufficient reasons to grant a variance. First and foremost, they must be a hardship in the land district from other, distinct from other properties in the same zone. Amy, can you comment on that or maybe give us a better definition as to what we're supposed to be using?
Well-
Because it seems that the applications fit what we have said tonight, better use of the property. Is there another terminology that she wants us to use?
What you need to be is defensible in a court of law, that there is a hardship demonstrated, and better use of the property is not a demonstration of hardship. What the court would do if they ever needed to defend a position would be go back to the record and find the real reason that was stated on the record for granting. So it's kind of put over, through the public hearing, you know, through the recordings. However, if I might back up a moment and take this moment to make a suggestion or an offer. There's been several opportunities of late, Mr. Hein and myself both attended a very useful seminar at Wesleyan University from the Connecticut Bar Association, the planning and zoning section. The book is far too extensive to replicate very well, but it's become a very good tool. And what I might offer to you, should you choose to do so, is perhaps setting up a workshop, either with members of that, of the same planning and zoning section of the bar outside of the town of Wallingford or with our own law department. It's a suggestion, you know, to have just that sort of informative. I'd be happy to look into that if something, if that's something you choose to move forward with.
I would be in favor of that. I mean, I don't know about the rest of the panel, but I mean, it seems that it's becoming an issue in terms of legality for courts and what have you, so. I say, I say that would be good too, but anything that we can do to better state our reasoning in the application is always, even if it's just them coming here for a special meeting.
I went to, I believe it was last year, I went to that one over at Wesleyan. And the problem I have with it is that, I think, no, Jamie, you're an attorney, right? No, nothing against you, but-
No offense.
I think everybody expects us all to be attorneys and know the ins and outs of the law and in the wording. And I went to that and I sat through a bunch of hours listening to attorneys get up in front of you in this whole thing and explain to you certain ways, ins and outs of variances and how to come in front of us, the board, and how they were gonna, you know, produce their application in front and everything else. And they were telling you how to vote and how to, you know, a hardship and everything else. And when they got all done doing that, another lawyer stood up there and he told you how he was gonna beat you at that. And I got up and left, I'm gonna be honest, because not only are they're gonna tell you how to vote, but then they're gonna tell you how they're gonna beat you in court on it. So I personally didn't get anything out of it. I kind of shook my head at it, saying these lawyers are all getting paid to stand in front of us up there and the town paid to send us there. And then, okay, they were telling you how this certain application and they went back into law, the cases that went in front of a court because, you know, somebody sued or whatever. And then, once they got done, they told, explained to you how they beat the system. And to me, I just shook my head at it, because nine times out of ten, in my opinion, I understand if it ended up in court in front of a judge and everything else, some of our applications that are approved, maybe they wouldn't hold water, I don't know. But I know a lot of the applications, like the last one we just granted before pre-zoning, not doing anything else different than anybody else in the neighborhood.
Right.
And I also think that Amy does a very good job of rifling through and bringing applications in front of us. I think, Tom, you would know, I've been here for a little bit, a little while, Phil's been here longer, used to get a lot of applications, and now Amy kind of brings the ones that are possible. So I don't know. I look at this and I kind of shake my head at, to be honest with you, because we're expected to be attorneys up here and we're not. We're just, most of us are just general laymen coming up here and trying to do a good job for the town and for the people that own the property and pay taxes and want to do something on the property that's not outlandish.
Amy, what sparked this memorandum to be issued by Janice?
I think just as she mentioned in there, you know, there's been a changeover in board members.
Oh, sure.
And, you know, knowledge is power and, you know, so if we need to gather some more information or perhaps have a workshop type session, I'll be happy, again, I'll be happy to arrange it. It's, you know, but that was the prompting and to make sure we know what we're supposed to be doing.
I think we all-
Simple as that, and however we can help, and however I can help, if I can set something up.
I think we all know what we're supposed to be doing, and sometimes, you know, rules and regulations, as they say, are made to be broken. And we're just more or less giving the taxpayer permission to break the regulation or to- taxpayer permission to break the regulation or to, and most of the time, I'd say ninety-five percent of the time, I think what we do is right. I mean, there is, there is times when we get sued and we lose occasionally, but you win some, you lose some.
I believe this, like I just mentioned, the spirit was intended in the fact that we have some new board members and perhaps it might be helpful to, for you to do all with Yumei, and if you'd like to reach out to me, I'd be happy to schedule something if that's the end result.
I do want to say in all this, I do think you do a very good job, Amy. It's my criticism of that class I went to, nothing on you, please. It just, that's the way the feeling I got when I went and spent my own time on a Saturday, went there and listened to the whole hogwash, and I was very interested at the beginning, to be honest with you. It is, until one by one, they all got up there and told how they were going to beat what the other lawyer just said is the right thing to do. And I just, like I said, I finally at one intermission, I just said to, I went with Mike Liddon was there, and I said to him, I said, I've had enough, I'm leaving, because one guy's telling you how to, you know, rule on an application or how he's going to present the application, and the other guy says, well, once you approve that, guess what? I'm going to, or you deny it, I'm going to show you how I'm going to beat you in court. And I was like, I couldn't believe it. But anyways, thank you, though, I think you do do a good job.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, you know, what, you know, arguments folks make on either side of the decisions we make aside, I'm always one to want more information about, you know, the processes we're going through here, and so I, you know, I certainly wouldn't mind additional training and at least understanding what those arguments on both sides are so that we're a little bit better equipped to handle them down the road if someone does challenge our rulings. But I mean, with all due respect, that's just my personal...
So you're in favor of having a workshop?
I would be.
I've been to a lot of workshops, and, not a lot, but I've been on the commission for sixteen years. One of those sixteen years, I have attended some workshops, and it confused me. One workshop tells you to do A and the next one tells you to do B, like Mr. Rosick said, it's confusing. But if we have a workshop that is given by the town attorney, at least we would be getting it from her point of view, because you go to a workshop and you have these, you know, you have speakers, they're from all over the state, and believe it or not, although the law is written the same, different zoning boards, they're really different. So if we want to have a vote on that, to have a workshop... You want to make a motion that we have Amy approach the town attorney?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we ask the town attorney to provide a workshop training for members of the board who are interested.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll take care of that. I will approach the legal department and touch base with you all to set something up for in-house legal counsel to set up a workshop.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn?
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.